With the Pledge of Allegiance, either Doreta or Gretchen will lead us.
I'll do it.
Thanks, Doreta.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, and to the United States of America, to their republic, for which they stand its foundation under God, and to its people with the virginity and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody.
Hello, everybody.
Greet the new members at your tables. And this is going to be a reminder for everybody too, since we've got a full house, to make sure you stand close to the microphone. Sorry, that was, I don't know if anybody could hear me at all before that. So let's go around by the tables and introduce any guests or visiting Rotarians. Nobody at this table. I know we've got a visiting Rotarian at Guy's table. Anybody wants to introduce him if you met him?
My name is David Bassarid. I'm a member of the Rotary Club of Albany. I've been a member there for about fifty-six years. I'm a pastor's secretary governor. And I've been to Newport since I was a kid and ride the shark.
On a side note, in talking to David before the meeting started, I'm sure I bumped into him, or probably literally multiple times. He was an original owner at Skewer Landing, and so were my parents. So we were talking about the early eighties and how that place worked and has changed over the decades. But I would have been eight or nine years old and probably running into him on the pickleball court there when I was a kid. So at this table.
I have Noam Kavanagh with me, and she has applied for membership of Rotary. It's being circulated around.
Oh, great. People here.
I have brought my significant other, who happens to be a visiting Rotarian because he belongs to the club in Vancouver, Washington, and I'm still here, and it's working out really fine. But anyway, this is Ken France.
I think we've got a parent of one of our Students of the Month. Oh, yeah, thank you.
Daniel Keck, who is Camille Keck's dad. We're looking forward to Camille's speech today.
Raina, looks like you've probably got the rest.
So we have our Rotary Students of the Month, who will be up here soon, our inbound Maureen. And then I have Ashley and Kyle Humphries, who are parents of one of our students.
Welcome, everybody. She's not a guest. She was a member. Welcome back to the room. So I just wanted to say good afternoon, members and guests, and families of our Students of the Month. It's really great to see you, and it's, and we're looking forward. This is one of our favorite weeks of each month during the school year as our Students of the Month. A special thanks to our greeters, Doreta and Gretchen, our cleanup crew. I think we have at least one signed up, and Amy signed up, and of course, I'll be sticking around. Anybody else who can help out with the cleanup. Tanya, again, for organizing our lunch with the roast. It's been great. And thanks to John again for the weather. We appreciate it.
It's over.
It's great to see everybody, and again, a warm welcome especially to our visiting Rotarians, Ken and David. And David probably doesn't know, but Ken's been a longtime member here, so he just became a member in Vancouver. But he's here most of the time, too. And so we're excited to welcome our NHS Students of the Month. As Raina said, it's Kyle Humphries and Camille Keck. And it's a great presentation again as a reminder. This is our, September is our focus for September is Rotary Education and Literacy Month. So under the new format, we're going to get started. I'm sorry to kind of spring this on Raina, but I'm going to have her come up now. It'll give her more time to eat. And start off our presentation and introduce our Students of the Month. So please help me welcome Raina.
All right, our first Student of the Month is Camille Keck. And she is very involved in athletics, has been a two-time varsity volleyball captain and a four-time varsity wrestling captain. And she's also involved in leadership. She works at Dutch Brothers. And a fun fact about her, she loves to bake and walk on the beach. Please welcome Camille.
Hi, everybody. I'm Camille. And here we go. My speech is about the discipline, keep failing. A little background, I chose to do this about wrestling because I'm very passionate about it, not just the sport itself, it's something I love, but just the community of my team. We work really hard and we like to play at the same time. As you can see, we play a lot of disc golf. We have ultimate football tournaments. We go on team runs on the beach. But it's just where I spend a lot of my time. It's something I'm very passionate about, so it's something I wanted to write about. All right. Discipline doesn't start, doesn't feel like strength when you're the one getting pinned. That's something I learned on wrestling, a place where I've lost more times than I'd like to admit. Like many people, I used to think discipline meant waking up early, pushing through pain, working harder than everyone else. And I mean, it does mean those things, but there's another layer to it. One of the most, one that most people never really talk about. Real discipline, it's showing up after you failed and failed and failed again. Discipline to me is the ability to act according to your goals, values, long-term visions, even when you don't feel like it. But let's talk about failure. I believe we misunderstand it. Failure isn't really the end, it's more of a beginning. I started wrestling the summer of, after eighth grade. Some would say I started late, some would say I started early, but honestly, it doesn't matter. But honestly, it doesn't matter because I wrestle along girls who have won a state championship even in their second year of wrestling. Now, I've trained hard. I've lifted, ran, drilled before school, after school, even with the best people in the room. Every summer I'm in the room and somehow I still fall short. People congratulate me all the time, but in my mind, I wonder why, because I lose so much as that mean the most. Despite even having an impressive record, I can feel like I failed, giving me a reason to quit. And with failure comes the most dangerous questions of, what's the point? Why am I even doing this? Why ever even be the greatest? Failure makes your mind spiral. It makes you question everything you've worked for. But here's what I've started to realize. The journey is more important than the destination itself. Now, I qualified for state both my sophomore and junior year. I was always expected or predicted to place. Last year, I was ranked throughout almost whole season third. So obviously, I was, people predicted me at least be on the podium twice, but both times I didn't. And especially after failing the second time, it definitely did have impact on my confidence. But this also became a turning point for me because that's when I started learning what discipline really means. Anyone can be disciplined when things are going well, but being disciplined after failure, that's different. Wrestling taught me that. Now, when I fail, I don't train less. I lift a little heavier, I run a little more, and I put in some extra reps. Failure has became my fuel, although most people don't realize this. Failure is universal. It's not just athletes who go through this. These are just some examples I found that while Disney had his first animation company go bankrupt. He was rejected countless of times. Multiple times he failed, but he never gave up. When he died in nineteen sixty-six, he was worth over a hundred million dollars, and his dream became a legacy. Also, Colonel Sanders, the founder of KFC, faced over one thousand rejections for his chicken recipe before someone finally said yes. Imagine failing one thousand times but still getting up and trying again. And today, KFC is worth over thirty billion dollars. Just a quote that I like from Robert F. Kennedy is, only those who dare to fail greatly can ever achieve greatly. Failing is hard, but having discipline to continue after failing is even harder. That's what separates the good from the great and what makes a champion on the mat and in life. So if you fail, good, it means you're trying, but most importantly, keep going. Go to the last slide? Well, I guess I missed one. You go to the next slide. Because the only thing more powerful than discipline is the discipline to keep going after you fail.
All right, our next student is Kylie Humphries. She is involved in student council, is our senior class president. She attended Camp Reila, thanks to this club, and she's also hosted exchange students. And she hopes to become a veterinarian. Please welcome Kylie.
Hi. So now that she says that I want to be a veterinarian, it kind of sounds bad that I'm talking about archery. Hello. I'm Kylie. I am seventeen years old, and I'm a current high school student, senior in high school. I've been a proud pub since kindergarten, but before we moved to Newport, we lived in Newburgh. We were regularly attending a three-D archery course near our house. That's where my family started this journey. We, this is where we gained our passion. It's a fun pastime that we enjoyed as a family discovering the, disconnecting from the chaos of everyday life, allowing us to spend more time as family. Since then, we have found friends that share the same passion, traveling to multiple states competing in these competitions. I think what makes this the most enjoyable is the new friends that we've met along the way and the friendly sibling rivalry we have going on. I started archery at a very young age, just seen in the first photo. I was about four years old when I got my first bow. And I was with my family, and that's my dad. And then on the other side is the picture, my most recent picture from the first competition of the summer, and that was in Idaho. Last summer was when we rediscovered our love for archery. I did two shoots that summer. The first being in Hudo, Oregon, where we, we were just having a friendly competition with our family and friends. And we were able to just experience that and see what it was like. And then later, we did a shoot in Washington, and that's where we competed for the first time. The shoot was, which is where we, this is the first time I did something from away from school and away from sports. This was something just for me. Okay, sorry. The terrain was very rugged, and it was different from what I'd other, like what I've done before. And it was, it was interesting, I'll give you that. But I fell in love with it because it was something new and something just for me. This competition was the first of many competitions I would compete in, and this is where I got my first trophy and cash prize and where I took second on the podium. At the beginning of the summer, we continued to do more competitions. The Northwest Mountain Challenge is the organization that puts on these shoots, and they do them in threes, with the opportunity to earn a triple crown, which is where a person or team competes in all competitions in Idaho, Oregon, and Washington. And they win with the highest scores. This is where my best friend and I decided to compete individually and as a team. The first competition was held at Tamara Ski Resort in Idaho. The first competition was just a girls' trip. There were no boys. We were entirely on our own. The first day of the comp was not my best. I had some minor issues with my bow, which set me back. And I did not feel as I was being successful as I would have liked to been. These issues resulted in a low, my lowest score of everyone that was competing this, and sent me back in the competition. In order to overcome this, I had to get out of my head and keep trying. The second day, I had the biggest jump in points and doubled my score from the previous day. Unfortunately, I did not make the podium, but I overcame this doubt and pushed myself to not get discouraged and keep trying. The help, the help of my encouragement from my dad, who couldn't be there. He helped me get back up and keep pushing and not let the fact that I had that, had one bad day impact my entire weekend. The slide, this slide is, was kind of more fun. We kind of didn't take it as serious because we were just messing around, so we had some fun with the targets after we shot it. And we kind of just, yeah, it was, I was, with just me, my dad, and the people we met, and we decided we're going to take photos of the target. This was when we went to Hudo, and this is in Oregon. It's probably, most of you know where it is. It's the Hudoski Resort. And it just doesn't have any snow on it. I found myself ready for this challenge. I was not going to let myself be discouraged. I was going to keep my head up and stay strong. And about a week before the competition, I had gotten a new bow. This would give me a better advantage because I was not, with my previous bow, I was not able to go as far. I didn't have the better accuracy, but with this bow, I could go farther and I had better accuracy. So being that I only had one week to prepare this new bow, I was not sure how this competition would go. This time, though, I had another rest of my family to help with any problems that may occur. This competition went way better than last because I had my, my best friend and I got a shoe with our brothers. The second day, that day was shot really well. We ended up, so my best friend shot really well that day. She ended up taking first place. And people decided to question us because we were all, just as like my siblings, ins. They did not believe that we actually were honest with our scores. And this made a huge impact because as a group, we valued integrity and how people perceive us. And in the end, it made us stronger because it, it took us, and took us into the last competition, being more aware of what other people think and wanted to stay strong. And because we valued integrity, we wanted to make sure everyone knew that we were honest and we didn't, people question our scores. And that just wasn't what we wanted. So going into that third competition, it was hard, but we were ready. And in this competition, I took third place and I had gotten back on the podium. The final competition this summer was different compared to the rest. It was just our brothers and brothers along with my best friend and I. We stayed at Stevens Pass Ski Resort. The entire time, we were in a trailer. The trailer didn't have a bathroom or kitchen. We had beds and chairs outside. And that was about it. And going into this competition, I spent more time practicing and preparing myself for this competition. During our time, we experienced new things while staying there and built really strong connections with the people around us. The world would be, this would be our last time competing in the youth bracket. So we put all, so we put it all out there and tried our best. The state, this state happened to be the, some of the steepest and rockiest terrain. This time, we were ready to face adversity, not let other opinions, others, get opinions get in our way. The first night, we got to watch my dad and brother compete in a competition to see everyone, for everyone to see who can hit a steel target. They called it the smoke round. They kept having to scoot back every time they successfully hit the target. And if you did not hit the target, you were out of the competition. My dad ended up taking the first place win, and he got the half of the money pot. And it was one of the best times I had there because I wasn't competing in it, but I was there for it. And it was one of the memories my dad and I will have forever. This shoot was different compared to the rest because I was confident and I was trying my best. I ended up taking third place again, but I wasn't disappointed. I was proud of how far I come and how far I come since the first competition compared to the last. Because I grew so much between the first and last competition of the summer, especially myself, I'm believing that I could do it. That was the final competition, and since we competed in the triple crown, we ended up winning the youth teams competition, which meant we had the highest score in the youth teams. We didn't get the individual one, but we were still just, just as happy. Going forward, I know what I'm going to do now and how I'm going to push myself in the future. As I go forward in my senior year and one pub's next, I know that is something I want to continue in the future. Even though I'm no longer able to compete in the youth bracket, I decided to compete in the women's bracket and do, and to do the best I can. Looking back at the time I spent doing these competitions to help me find who I am and who I can be without school or sports. And this is something just for me. All the ski lifts taken up the mountains, the last we experienced, the people we met, everything was worth it and helped encourage me to find who I am and my next steps into adulthood. As I go forward, I'm not scared of what's next. I have learned to embrace it, and not everything is going to be easy. But I know believing in yourself is the first step. Thank you.
Thank you so much, guys, and I wanted to make sure I gave you a chance to go all the way back and sit down, Kylie, before I ask you to come back. If I could have time, Camille, come back up here. And off, you're going to picture, will it be okay for you there?
Yep.
So Kylie and Camille, first I just want to say the card that you got there, it's just to thank you again for speaking to our club and sharing your experiences with us and your plans for the future. Rotary's been working to eradicate polio around the world for more than thirty-five years now. And actually, as a reminder for our members, Polio Day is coming up next month. And so our members have contributed more than two-point-one billion dollars to protect over three billion children around the world from polio. And as a token of our appreciation, we're going to be vaccinating fifty children against polio in your name for speaking to us. Thank you again. I also just wanted to listen to you guys and listen to you speak. And so team sports, everybody talks about what they learn from team sports. I can tell you, you learn a lot from individual sports, too. When you're on the mat or in front of everyone else, you know, everything you do, everybody's watching all the time. And so I think that it really shows with you guys' speaking ability. And I hope you guys consider doing our four-way speech contest for our club or other speaking engagements for scholarships this year and all that. You guys will do great. So last week, one of the, so we had it out for a couple of weeks, but nobody won. We didn't have enough people. Nobody wanted a fifty-fifty drawing for the Beaver-Duck game. So I wanted to bring it up again, and I just decided to make an executive decision on it. Because I had said that if nobody won it, all the proceeds were just going to go to the, to our general fund. But what I would rather do is I'd like to leave it open. Give more people an opportunity to put into it. It's five dollars for a square. But in order to do that, we need to determine what game we're going to use. Because obviously, there's not a Beaver-Duck game again. And so a lot of people were pretty close. That's one that is clearly, some people were thinking, and they, they got pretty close. Because all that mattered was the final digit of each team's score for the final score. But so in order to keep it going, what I've decided to do is I will flip a coin. And if it's heads or duck bills, we'll go Duck game, so the Duck-Penn State game. If it's tails or Beaver-tails, we'll go Beaver-Houston game for this weekend. I will flip that, and just so everybody knows, Mark Miranda is the Duck Bill. And Lincoln County Sheriff's Office is the Beaver-tail. And it is heads, Mark Miranda, so it'll be the Ducks versus Penn State game. So please, you don't have to be a Duck fan. You could be a Beaver fan and be, try and depict the score that you think Penn State's going to win by. But the horse still over there. There's, I can't do that math that fast. Let's see, sixty-five. Less than thirty, less than thirty spots taken, so there's still like seventy more spots. And if not, we'll probably keep rolling it through the season until somebody wins. So the sooner you get in, the more chances you have to win the buy. You win half of what's, half of the kitty. So whatever's in the amount of money put into it, you win half of that, and then an additional matching amount to your Paul Harris. And the other half of the cash will go to the general fund. Okay, so now I want to invite Amy up. She's going to fill us in on our Italy trip where she was able to visit Ollie. If everybody remembers, Ollie, he was our, he was a past incoming Rotary exchange student, and she got to visit with him and his family. So we want to hear from Amy, so please welcome Amy.
Right, I, I have pictures from Christie as well, and this isn't just for us to show off that we are both in Italy. I, I wanted to include these pictures, and the reasons that I decided to do this was because of a letter that I got from Gianluca, which, after we had just left their family house, and Gianluca is Ollie's dad. But, so these are some of the pictures, and it's just a great reminder. So this is Christine Mill with the kids, and this is Gianluca, Ollie, and then Sarah, their mom. And how happy they were to welcome all of us. They've had a lot of visitors. Ollie invited half of Newport. And I, I mean, countless amount of kids have come to see him, too. By the time we got there, they were actually tired because they've hosted so much. So if you want to go to the next photo, just to show some of the fun. So is this in Venice, Christine, or Lake Garda? Okay, so Lake Garda is close to Verona, which is Ollie's home. It's about maybe half hour, forty minutes away. Yeah, go to the next photo. And Christine, I wanted Christine to share pictures, too, because we've just been talking about what a full circle moment it was for us, you know, to see Ollie here in our environment, and then to go there and be in his environment. It was just really meaningful, and we all several times cried. I know Christine and Bill did, and Sarah, and when we had to leave each other. So, and this is Ollie's mountain house. They have a home in the mountain. And what I found out about that, when I was talking to Sarah about the mountain house, and then their house in Verona is very nice. And I, I just said, how, you know, it's a generational home. And I said, so did your, your grandfather fight in World War II or anything like that? And she said, no, but our whole family had to evacuate our home because the Nazis took over our house. And they lived in this mountain house during World War II. So just over there, we talked about how they celebrate that the fact that this is the only, their generation is the only one that's ever been at war. And so I just thought that was a really important reminder. It gave me chills to think about. Because, you know, living here, we didn't really have the impact just like that. So where we gave up our homes. So there's the next picture is our family at Ollie's house. They have an outdoor pizza kitchen, which they, so in their family, Gianluca's family has, is a history of making pizza. They own, he, his parents own a pizzeria. He now owns a pizzeria, too, on his side. He's actually a, an engineer, a structural engineer. So he just does it for fun, but they were amazing. And now I can't ever eat pizza here because it was so good. So that's the next photo. That is, so Ollie actually had never been to Rome, and so he accompanied us to Rome. And that was a really great, fun time, and it's very awesome to have an Italian interpreter. And he had some suggestions from his family on where to go to eat. But because of him, we saw some things that we might not have seen because he asked taxi drivers for advice, whatever. So next slide. And then that was, this is one of the things we got to do because he asked a taxi driver what we should do. And they're like, you need to go see sunset at this park overlooking Rome. And so we hiked up there. And I've never walked so much in my life, which was great because I ate a lot. So anyway, it was just, it was, it was a really amazing time. And I just want to read you Gianluca's letter that he sent to me, and it says, hi, Amy. And he wrote me to the side because we had a text string going with his whole family. I'm writing you now something I wasn't able to say before. I'm addressing this to you directly without Ollie seeing it, but please share it with Rob, Christie, Bill, Jolie, and Ryan, which is all these other host parents, and other Ollie's friends, too. I'm happy, so, so happy because I've won the bet. When Ollie chose to spend a year away from home, we suffered. Sarah suffered more than me, of course, because as you know, Italian moms don't usually let their sons leave home before they turn forty. But I suffered, too. Why? Because I didn't believe there were people out there special enough to truly take care of my son. I thought people were selfish and that a seventeen-year-old boy would only be seen as a burden to carry until the year was finally over. But I was wrong, so wrong. There are still special people in this world, and we've been lucky enough to meet them. People who give to others freely simply because they feel they're doing something good. Something that makes them feel good, something that doesn't take away the difficulties, but rewards them in a deeper way. Yes, we had little faith in humanity. But then we found people like you, and everything changed. We're amazed by your passion, by your generosity. We're amazed by your passion, by your generosity, by the way you've embraced Ollie. We're honestly in awe. And suddenly it's not just about Ollie anymore. Special bonds have grown between all of us, bonds we couldn't even have imagined two years ago. So thank you, thank you, thank you. We'll always be grateful, not only for what we've done for Ollie, what you've done for Ollie, but also providing us, providing to us that love.
Thank you, Amy, for sharing that with us and uh, for sacrificing my go ahead.
I know.
So I want to uh quickly ask for um, uh announcements. I know Rick uh, you know, wasn't able to stay last time, but I know after putting on the, Rick, as we talked about last time, was the the host for our fundraising concert and worked really hard on that and worked really hard on getting sponsors. And he wanted to do a special recognition. And thank you for our sponsors. So, thank you, Mike Rick.
Thank you, Mr. President. Hey, thank you all so much. I mean, you all gave, thank you. You all gave, but um, Freddie and Vantage uh to top along with John Clark. And then as we go down here, there are a dozen or so of you folks in the club. Mark, the Zagles, Doretta, uh, Richard, who's not here, uh, Dave Adolf, Trevor, uh, Megan, Robin, Amy Thompson, and then down on the bottom, you can see all the silent auction items. So thank you guys so much. Without you, we wouldn't have had anything going on there at all. So um, the concert was great, silent auction items. We had thirty-three. They all went away, which I was really happy about. And so again, God bless. Thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
And really Rick, thank you. Uh, none of that would have happened, of course, without everything that you did. Uh, I, I guess that was one of the best silent auctions I've seen. The concert was great. The band was great. Everybody had a great time. So I really thank you for all the work you put in on that. Uh, Michelle?
Do we know what the total raised was?
I don't know if we've got the final numbers yet.
We just got the PACS bill like yesterday. I told Mark I was going to go through it carefully. Uh, and then uh, give them the final accounting. So we'll know by next meeting.
And Michelle, since you got the puppy out, I'm not going to have you come up. But as everybody knows, Michelle's been a blue badge actually for a long time, but we never had it ready here. Okay. I really didn't want to disturb the puppy. So this has been a long time coming to actually get it done. And because we have some, a little bit of hiccups back in the way. Everybody thinking somebody else was getting it done, but uh, congratulations, Michelle. Thanks, Ty. Thanks, Michelle. Um, so uh, other announcements. Uh, yes. So, we got, we got puppy handoff.
Um, so it brought to my attention by actually one of my customers, but Samaritan Advantage health plans is dropping all the time this year. That is something we can actually replace at State Farm. So if you know anybody who's affected by it or who's losing their plan, how about we go to call something that actually bill and nobody quite knows that.
So could you repeat that? And the Samaritans dropping all their plans?
Samaritan Advantage health plans are just going on the end of the year. So anybody who's on this plan is affected by it. So if you guys have one, send them over here. We've told several people already and the plan is a lot more so.
Thank you. Mark, stop. Thanks, Tana. Appreciate you getting your steps in.
Okay, thank you. Uh, just for anybody that missed out on the barbecue, I've got some more of the commemorative postmarks for our seventieth anniversary. If you didn't get one, let me know and I'll get you one.
Thanks, Mark. Other announcements?
I have a whole set. Last week, somebody asked me about a hyperflask cup that was left here. And I happened to stumble upon it today, so I don't remember who it was. That's why I asked. I don't want to say.
No other announcements? We'll do some, anybody have happy bucks? Somebody has to be happy about.
Considering I would have had to pay a whole lot more to replace that model, probably ten dollars happy to get my model back. Thank you.
And Doretta in the back.
So I want to give about fifty bucks to Freddie Saxton's Paul Harris. Uh, Freddie Saxton, he was just elected as a director of National Association of Realtors, which lost a really big deal for a very small rural community like ours and uh board. And uh, he not only represents Realtors, but he represents more importantly, private property owners in both our area and state and country. So congratulations to Freddie. It's a high recognition and I know he'll do good.
One of our parents.
We are feeling a hundred dollars happy for Maureen's end of the year trip.
She's just trying to keep them having to go back and forth.
So I want to be a hundred dollars happy in honor of Christie Klein to Maureen's end of the year trip. I don't know that you all know this, but Christie Klein is participating with dancing with the Coastal Stars this year in honor of Samaritan House. She's working on raising money for Samaritan House, but is also representing all of us as vertarians in such a great program here. Um, here in Newport. I work as a dependency lawyer. I see families change in Samaritan House every day. I sit on Samaritan House board. Do you have any questions about Samaritan House or how you can donate? Let me know. And please um, help support Christie by donating to her fundraising or attending the event on November first. I also know Christie's um, coach who tells me that their dance is coming on really well and it's going to be really amazing. And I've also seen some pre-clips of it, Christie, which you probably don't know. And it is amazing. So thank you, Christie, for supporting this wonderful organization.
Rick?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Christie and Dave Adolf, who isn't here. I'm fifty-six dollars happy because I got five point six acres. It was the old radio station's antenna site, um, complete with lots of hornets. But anyway, I made clear in that and now I have all these for the construction companies. So thank you both very much.
I'd like to do fifty dollars towards um, our direct um, foundation here. I suppose I have two girls that just started at Oregon State. So I do like to do fifty dollars because they're both fifth-generation Oregon Stateers.
And I'm an Indian, which yeah, is great.
No, no predictions for the duck game, duck Penn State game this weekend. No happy bucks for the Civil War, nothing?
Do twenty for the Civil War. Happy, they're happy.
Anything else? Okay. And I'll end the happy bucks. Um, and uh, welcome back our secretary, Julia.
Hello again.
Hello, Julia.
Um, hi, everybody. I'm Julie Dobies. I'm the club's ma'am. Last name is Dobies. Um, my, I'm the girl club secretary. Um, and I took over for lovely Diane. Um, my duties did begin at the beginning of July, but I had to settle in, I had to deal with some things, but I'm back now. I'm very happy. I missed everyone and I missed this. So very happy to be in our new venue. Um, for our new members and guests, uh, in addition to creating the minutes and compiling documents for monthly board meetings, secretary duties include entering attendance information for all members and managing a bunch of administrative lists and information in the club database. And various other things. Um, in addition to providing reports at regular meetings like this. Um, today on this beautiful day, we have twenty-five people physically in attendance and we have six members on Zoom. Um, and I will be adjusting this report a little bit each week as I settle in and figure out what works best. But thank you all for being here today.
Thank you. Uh, one of the things we were talking about is mainly is, you know, reporting on how many members are here, but everybody can tell there's more than twenty-five people membered over here, which is awesome. Uh, the more the merrier because that's what we're trying to keep track of too, is how many people we have here. And as you can tell, uh, we're going to probably start moving the badge table to a separate table. So, because all of our tables are full, which is awesome. So again, welcome back, Julia. Thank you so much. It's great to see you. Uh, John, do we have social media or fifty-fifty?
We have both.
What?
Social media winner is Mrs. Italy. And this week's fifty-fifty is up to one five hundred fifty-two dollars divided by two is seventy-six. So the winner will win seventy-six. But anybody, I don't want anybody from Italy that went to Italy to win because you're a lot. Here it is. Oh.
We forgot to do the membership incentive, so we're going to do that.
Getting used to this. Uh, so I forgot to do the membership incentive. And so the membership incentive is five dollars per meeting. And I just choose a member randomly. And if the member is here, you get that five dollars or if you were, the member is not here, then it rolls over to the next week. And so if you're here and you win, then you get ten dollars and so on and so forth. And so today's winner is John Clark. And he is not here, so we'll roll over into next week to be ten dollars. We'll make twenty dollars next week. I wasn't here last week. Sorry.
Brian, I don't mean to interrupt, but last week I asked everyone I would donate five dollars to your Paul Harris. If anyone, if you stayed on social media for one week and did some kind of other. And then they tell you won though too. Helping someone doing something kind. Did anyone do anything your homework lately? We got one. On social media, you can't be on social media for one week. Yeah, we got one for me.
I helped our neighbor with gardening brush.
Uh, I helped somebody get uh, to their car and get them, settle them. They were elderly and needed some help.
Thank you, Ken. Um, I had a question. You know, given the microphone, Amy, I just had a question. Cause I was curious if Ollie had said, why he'd never been to Rome. When you said that, I was curious.
Um, I, I would take a guess, but I think um, his dad does not like crowds. And so I would guess that maybe that's why they go into the mountains and yeah.
I was.
Three and a half hour train ride. Yeah, it's not, not far. Yeah. It's like going to Bend. Yeah.
So that letter that the, the dad wrote was very well written. Does he speak that?
He, I wouldn't be surprised if he had some help with that. Ollie does say that he uses chat GPT a lot, but um, he is pretty well spoken and he works in France a lot too. So he's fluent in French as well. Um, but yeah, he, he is, he does express his gratitude a lot, but that was, I just, yeah, I thought, yeah, I thought it was, I mean, when I read it, I started crying. So I wanted to share it with you guys. Yeah.
I was just curious about that. Uh, uh, it seems like that would be, you know, one of those places that if you, you know, you'd fly out of.
Yeah, no, it's not far.
Uh, okay. So uh, there aren't no, any other last minute now. Is there anything anybody wants to bring up? Again, so I want to really uh, thank you David and Kita Ken for being our guests here today. And really thank you to the families of the students of the month. They were going to be forced to be here by rain. They didn't have a choice. I really appreciate the parents coming too. Um, so with that, I will uh, first I want to say that our next uh, launch meeting, oh, new month, so it'll be October. Um, so it's October second here at noon and our presentation will be Dan Helen, which we, who we've seen before. But he's giving us an update. Uh, he's from OSU, giving us an update on the pack wave project again. Um, and so with that, I'll ask Gretchen to take us out with the four-way test. Oh, sorry. Oh, and also, yeah, uh, please take food, otherwise it's going in the uh, compost.
Four ways to ask the things we think they were due. First. Second.
Thank you, everybody. Have a great weekend.